All right, I'd like to call the, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the regular minutes from the June twelfth, two thousand eighteen meeting, but I think the only person present is Vance, so we're gonna have to kick those meeting minutes to the next meeting as well.
Okay.
To approve them. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the regular minutes of June twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Brian, a second?
A second.
Thanks Vance. Anybody have any corrections, comments, concerns about those? Okay, all in fi- all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Abstentions. And that motion carries. Judy, any correspondence?
No, just an updated from New Hampshire School Woods Association on the, um, trainings and I, I think I put those in the packet anyway, so.
Oh, I got an email or it was in the packet?
Yeah, both, yeah, probably, so, you know, if anybody wants to go to them, all you have to do is call Fran and she'll set you up.
Is there one, is one of, one's at White Mountain, right? Or did that already pass?
Uh, I don't know.
There was one of these.
There was, they usually have it at White, White Mountain in Concord.
Okay.
Those are two places.
All right, um, Deb?
I actually do have a couple of things. First of all, there's manifests, a lot of manifests that need to be signed in there. Um, also for the next meeting, um, during the budget, um, process, we had put in the budget, um, to up, uh, to replace the, um, financial server.
Yes.
So the financial system that I use for the school's finances is housed over here at, at the school in Trey's office, and the server is on its last legs.
Yeah.
Let me say that. Um, so we need to either replace the server, or there's also an option to do the cloud hosting through Tyler Technology, which is the company that we have the financial package with, so we'd like to move to the hosted service.
Sure.
Um, so anyways, we had pulled out like seven thousand dollars out of the budget and said, when the time comes, we'd use, look to the technology trust fund to do that, um, this summer, 'cause I really do need to get this going before the server goes, before we even have to replace it or
Yeah.
something happens. Um, it just gives us a lot more security. They do all the updates, 'cause now when the updates come in, we have to do the updates. And they're, you know, there's always, um, things getting updated, uh, any of the maintenance on the databases, everything will be handled by them. And again, it's a lot more secure. We have to have a data security policy anyway, and this would, the auditors would really be happy with this, too.
It's actually, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know if anybody else has any concerns or anything, but I would imagine you would be moving to some sort of web cloud-based system at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, that way it's off-site and you can access it from anywhere, too.
Right.
For you, for convenience, I mean.
From home, right.
Yeah, exactly, so. Well, you know, it does give you that option, you know?
No, I know it does, yeah.
Not that we want you working eighty hours a week, but I'm just saying, you know?
Yeah, anyway, um, so anyway, so we need to have a, a trust fund hearing, though, to get the money out of the tech trust fund, so that's the next meeting.
Sure. Do we need a motion for that? Do we need a motion to have the meeting?
You guys usually do, that's what I want you to normally do.
So, and it's up to seven thousand dollars, was it?
Uh, that's what we had in the budget. I'll have the exact figures, this, um, front time, or it actually looks a little bit less than that.
So we could just say it's gonna be less than, I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll accept a motion to, uh, post a meeting to remove up to seven thousand dollars from the technology trust fund for the purchase of a web-based server.
I'll make the motion. Thanks Vance, a second?
A second.
Thanks Karen. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Abstentions?
Can we just do that before we proceed?
So we'll set that up at the beginning of next meeting.
We'll just trust, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, somewhere seems to be, our academy, you know, we're tenants of Sporadicum, out of town, that meeting zone. Just to make sure we get cool people here.
Okay.
Maybe you should stay.
Yeah, good.
So the next meeting, you're gone?
I'm not gonna be here.
Okay.
We'll have a forum, uh.
Yeah, we should have.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this is like a very controversial issue, you know, for you. But you never know, right?
August eighth, ten, eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah, September.
Yeah. Anything else Deb?
That's it.
That's it, all right. Judy, superintendent's report.
Okay, so in your packet of your facilities committee meeting minutes, I just wanted to, to let you know that that is what Ryan went over at the last meeting, 'cause we had just had the facilities committee meeting, and then he went over all the discussion and, and issues that were, were discussed, so, you know, that was just a copy of that. And, um, the bids are also in the packet, and those are, uh, you'll be voting on a vendor, and there's three bids in there. Be your wood trees. Again, I'm just a reminder, I always put the goals in there, just in case anyone has a discussion on them, at least they'll be in the packet and, you know. So I'll just keep doing this, it's, I'll just keep them.
Yes, no, it's a, it's a nice refresher.
Um, and the policies are, at, at the second reading, we did not change anything, there were no changes made from the, from the last meeting to this meeting, so, and they've been posted, and no one has come forward with any changes. And, um, I also, that will have to have a bo- a vote by the board, and also I do have a nomination, I did not put in my memo, but I do have a nomination for a social worker, um, so we can do that during nomination.
Require, yeah, okay.
That's it.
All right, and I just, it's point of, um, just for some clarification, there's, there's a mention in the memo regarding the transportation he, uh, meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and just because of our discussion last week, so is this the meeting with our current contracted servicer? So have we already talked to, have we had discussions with others prior to this? We didn't know, we had a discussion about possibly contacting other vendors in the area and having that information prior to going to them?
We haven't had formal discussions, we have had discussions with other.
Okay.
Things, but I, I really need to look at, we, we need to have discussion with them that we're having, that we have now, you know?
All right.
And then we'll go with them.
Okay, so, next, so next week we're meeting with them?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I mean, do you feel like if things don't go away, we ideally want them to, do you feel like, you know, it's like January twenty-sixth or something, is that enough time to, you know, reach out, and some schools start looking at the policy?
Well, but I mean, it is, right, right, I mean, it is getting, um, close, but, I mean, we're gonna have to, we'll have to discuss that and see. And we'll ha- we'll have to discuss that.
No, I don't know with them, I mean, 'cause I know they've had some issues with moving to that city, if they can't,
Right, yeah.
um, if they can't remedy those issues and really give us what we need, at that point, is it so late that, you know, kinda starting, we have to go over there anyway?
I don't know, I don't think that we'll have to be stuck with that, I think that we'll, we'll have to be talking with other agencies, you know? And, you know, and seeing what's going on, I think we're better.
'Cause I think, you know, since our last meeting, there's, there's definitely four in the area, there's, but JPI's not in the area, but they've been kinda servicing us, and they're around, they're, they're around, there's, um, this first student. I think Jay, Jay mentioned something very, very early on.
Yeah, they're up in White, Whitefield area.
Yeah, they're north country, yeah.
Yeah, I actually happen to be in Lancaster, like, in April, two weeks ago, on one sixteen, and there's a huge, I think it's gonna bother.
Yeah, services that, yeah.
It's like twenty minutes ago. So, yeah, I'm just, I'm concerned that hopefully we, we can do something if they can't.
Mm-hmm. Right, right, mm-hmm.
I think, um, I think at this point, it's, it's more than just our must-rides, we, we're a lot of, of, like, trips that are.
It's more of the extra stuff.
Right.
Yeah, but that's sometimes just support, I mean.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying it's one's less than the other's.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
But that's, that's where the main, that's where the main kind of friction, you know, stands for, where you go trips.
Do we, I don't really think it's just do more, are they having issues with other schools that service, or is it just?
It's not just our district, I mean, they, yeah.
Yeah, I've heard of a lot of issues, too.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not just us, and, and, and they are pulling on a lot of drivers, because we're getting notices of different drivers, if it comes through our office as well. If the SEU is listed on that, the, um, the transcript or whatever, um, it goes to all the, the districts that have those,
Yeah.
people working for that company, so.
So it's more of a capacity issue other than a qu- an equipment issue, I mean, they have the, it's, they don't have the, they have the vehicles, they don't have the co- they don't have the drivers.
They don't have the drivers.
Right, so, so other vendors or companies, that they know that you've reached out to and they used to end up, like, pop up, so, okay?
But that hasn't risen.
What was the feedback, or is there some interest for some of them?
Oh, yeah.
Other ends?
Yeah, you know, so we'll, we'll see what happens, we haven't done anything formally, and we'd, we'd have to go through a formal process, but.
What's the, uh, what's the JPI bus that's there?
That bus was, um, the JPI bus that's been out there right now is to, 'cause we needed two buses for our summer school program. And so we needed that coverage, you know, the reason of that was two buses out there, one, that was the one that we had used to cover our,
Right.
summer school paints, and then the one that's, is the brand new one that just arrived, and they're still getting all the paper taken care of.
Just need the, the inspection and that, so.
Right, so it's, it sits there, it's very shiny, it's very nice, but it's, we can't, we can't use it yet.
Keep trying it.
Right.
So we're still waiting for the paperwork.
All right.
It's great to look at.
Scott, principal's report.
Thanks, a couple of quick things, uh, one, we did have a student, Andrew Wilson, who participated and presented a national conference out in San Diego with Mrs. Smith, and she's here tonight, so she's gonna, I'll let her speak to that.
Sure.
She's the resident expert on that presentation, much more so than I. Um, also just to give the, the board an update that both the cabling and floor projects are, being completed in the next, uh, next week or so. I know the cabling's supposed to be most, almost done, and flooring's coming in, um, in the next couple of weeks to be done, they have the NPR to finish up, and they hit the high school, and they have some minor work around here to kinda finish up the elementary school.
True.
Um, Pratt, uh, had their presentation on Friday, July thirteenth, it was well-attended, kids did a great job. Um, they have now departed until we meet again next summer, had a good, good presentation and good, good feedback from all, and they said it's out between, they could not, I asked a question last year and I got an answer between thirty and thirty-four. They, they couldn't, they, they're not.
Wow, they realize it's been that long.
Yeah, they're not quite, quite sure, um, they're, you know, and they're, they're gonna be having a new director of the program coming in for next year. The director who is there, she, uh, she's leaving after nine years, she got a job at another, uh, university, and so, but their assistant director will obviously be moving up, the director role, so there's some, there is some transition, but obviously it's gonna be a familiar place we have, so.
I think it's pretty cool, 'cause, I think they're based out of Manhattan, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Out of, actually.
It's not like they're, they have so many people that go to schools all over.
No, this is pretty.
And it's cool that we've kinda got them off in the areas.
And the, the other thing, this is, this past year, they had sixty-one signed up participants from the area, so that was the highest participation rate they've had in the thirty-plus years, um, that they have been here, so that's kinda cool, they were pretty excited about that, too. They kinda got to the point where like, we might be start telling kids, hey, look.
Right, yeah.
So, yeah, they had, we regret some of that.
Great to hear, Dan.
It was, it's not a bad thing to have. Um, the last thing is, there was a question last meeting regarding how many participants, students are participating in summer school, and we have approximately thirty, thirty-five students, uh, K through twelve, and a variety of ways that they're interacting with summer school programming. And that's all I got.
Good, thanks, hon. Um, committee reports, I know that, uh, facilities committee has not met, policy committee did not meet tonight, but we have the second meeting. Is there any other committees that have met, or anything that, anybody wants to report out regarding committees?
I mean, I've got one committee question, um, I'm the, I'm sorry, I'm, so I'm, I'm the budget person, um, I gotta mention a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, that there's a class that's coming up, I think, is their meeting next Wednesday?
Yes.
I think there's a really good chance I'm gonna miss that, so my question's like two-part, in one, if someone wants to cover it for me, or, or number two, do they wanna send a board member to these meetings, 'cause they're not really going over a budget that we've given them, I mean, it sounds like they're just looking at current spent financials.
Well, I, I'll give you my opinion.
I'm happy to go with the board, originally I think the purpose for this particular presentation was December, January, or January, February, we give them the budget and they tackle it, make changes that someone may come back and report to the board, but they're not tackling the budget.
They're just picking.
Sounds like they're just looking at bills, invoices, or manif- I don't know what they're, they're giving them.
Well, I don't think they're looking at that, they're, they're not getting access to the manifests, um, so, yeah, so I would say, my opinion as a board member, it doesn't, I don't think you need to be there, um, we've passed the budget, the budget committee's passed the budget, it's just been implemented last week. There's nothing new for next year's budget that's in place, teachers haven't been, um, asked to give any information for the needs for next year.
Right.
Um, so I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
Feel the same way, but I didn't wanna be, I don't know, just.
No, I, I don't, I don't think there's any, it's, it's never happened before, um, and I don't, I'm not sure, you know, I think it's great that they're meeting and wanna try to get ahead of some things, but I don't think it's necessary to be there, they don't, there's nothing to work, as far as next year's budget.
Right, and I'm not sure whether it's you or anybody who's here, I'm not sure if they have questions, I'm not sure I can answer them on the day-to-day financial.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's necessar- I don't think it's necessary for administration to be there. I, I mean, I don't know if it's legal, I don't know if legally you need to be there, but.
No, because I would only be a member of the public.
Yeah, so I don't, I mean, and that's just my personal feeling, I don't, we've never, it's never been handled this way before, and it doesn't mean that they don't have a right to meet and all those things, but I don't think we wanna put all these additional resources into, um, something that we haven't done yet. We don't have a budget to work on, it's not a, it's not a fiscal oversight committee, it's, it's not to look backwards to see how money's spent, it's to look beforeward thinking on how monies are gonna be appropriated in a general line item budget for the following year. So the, the budget was presented, it was approved, the administration is tasked with being good stewards of those monies in that budget moving forward, and to do the best they can to meet the needs that were outlined in the budgeting process, and that's, and that's it.
I feel the same way, I just wanna see what other people thought.
And when, when talking with council, um, they did say under RSA thirty-two, according on twenty-two, that the budget committee is, is not to, is not there, as you said, is not there to look at the day-to-day.
Right, it's, that's not the role.
Interactions of the budget, and, you know, as far as the administration goes, the administration is only a public, um, person at a, is part of the public at the, um, budget committee meeting, and, um, and they are, if, it, they are considered under the right to know, they are, they have to follow the right to know also.
Right.
If there's anything that they're requesting, they have to request it in writing, they have to be specific of what they want, and it's twenty-five cents a copy, and.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would think that they would have access to anything that the board would get access to in a public setting after the board has seen it.
Correct. Correct.
Because we deal with oversight, well, you know, of, of the expenditures on a, throughout the school year, or throughout the, the fiscal calendar year.
Correct. Right. Right.
I mean, that's the role of the board, um, so.
So what is the purpose of this meeting?
The second thing.
Um, is there an agenda, is there?
Yeah, I don't know if it has to be, does it need to be posted, I mean, are they?
The agenda doesn't need to be posted.
We do need to post the meeting, not the agenda, and they do need to keep minutes, and they need to pass them to a.
Yeah, and they have to keep, so.
So traditionally, it's, usually by the middle end of January, we have passed a budget.
It starts in, on October, November. Right.
Um, but it's kinda like a checks and balances committee, which is great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we give them the budget and they review it to make sure it's fine, um, oftentimes make cuts, so sometimes, for one time, nothing, you know, last year, a little bit of revision, but, and then whatever they decide, they present to, um, the community in March at this, so whoever the budget rep is usually sits on there, meetings and reports back. They don't usually start those meetings until January, so.
That's why I was inquiring, I learned why they don't have a meeting now, and if we don't know what it is, how can you say?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Not sure. I guess you could look back at last year's budget that you passed, but there's no information on how that's been allocated or expended so far, so there's no trending information, yeah, I don't know, I mean, it, if, if that's something that they wanna do, they have a right to do it, they have a right to certain amounts of, and certain types of information, um, but I, you know, I don't think it's a good allocation of our resources to be, to be spending a lot of time on something that hasn't happened yet, so, yeah, that's, but if, if they have to have meetings, do we have to post the meeting minutes?
Well, post it after they give them.
So what, is, is the budget committee meeting, meeting at the school, or where do they meet?
Typically meet here.
They meet here, in the library, yeah.
Yeah. And maybe it's, I mean, maybe it's something that, that gets recorded and put up on the website, as are other meetings, I don't know. You know, but I don't know if, but that would require someone to be here to do that, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, yeah, so I'm, I'm fine with the meeting and, you know, if you wanna be there, you can be there, but I don't feel like, from the board's perspective, that.
There's nothing that you can do there, so why, it's, it's out of your choice, you wanna go sit there and hear that, go sit there and hear that, I hear it every day. And then, or you can just wait, and then we'll hear about it later, is the way I look at it.
Yeah. All right, well, any, uh, anything else for other committees? No, all right, hearing nothing, I will move on to policy, so I'll, I'll take a motion so that we can put the policies on the table and, and if there's any discussion, but I think everything's, um, what we moved forward in the last time, so I'll accept a motion to approve, uh, policy J I C K, J B A A, J L C G, as, uh, provided, written?
I'll make it.
Thanks Vance.
Second.
Second, thanks Brian, does anybody have any questions, comments, or suggestions, or corrections? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Abstentions, and that motion carries. This is requiring board action. Uh, would this be the nomination?
I have nomination.
Okay, and then we'll, we can do the other, yeah?
Okay. Um, nomination is, uh, the social school social worker is Erin Bell, and I'll pass that around. Information, uh, so both Scott and I did do the interviewing, uh, and the other administrator was not available, it was during the summer we did this. And so we, we met with her and, and she has eleven years' experience, and, um, she's an excellent candidate. And we did have other candidates, however, um, they dropped out. So.
No, she's a great candidate, as she said, in part, like, her doing this is, she wanted to be closer to home from when I talked to her. She's always been looking for something that's closer to home.
I think it's a, I think it's a good fit.
Yeah.
For fragile one involved.
Yeah, good.
People are pretty excited about that.
Great.
Very good.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the nomination of Erin Bell as school social worker.
Oh, make the motion, I'll second it, where am I?
Yeah, you're good, you're good. Does anybody have any questions? No? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Abstentions, so welcome Erin. And, uh, why, should we discuss the tree bids? Actually, the, the next thing on the agenda is the school board goals, I'd like to push that off again, because there's only five, I said, the reason we pushed off before is there were others that were involved in the conversation, I think everybody's gonna be happy to have seen that, but before we, before we approve them.
Yep.
All right, tree removal bids, so in the packet we had three bids.
Tree bids.
Three tree removal bids.
I should have a quick question about those, um, I mean, I'm not a tree expert, I know, this is what you're cutting down, this is what's my confidence, one bid that was actually lower than the others.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I'm saying it was the same scope of work.
Yeah.
They all read exactly the same.
Yeah.
I like the low one.
Yeah, I do, too. Yeah, so, so we had three bids ranging from four thousand fifty dollars to nine thousand six hundred dollars, and the middle bid was eighty-two hundred dollars, all for the same scope of work, um, all the same job description, so I, I mean, I would, I think it would make sense if we, um, if we went with the lowest bid.
Do we have references for any of these?
Uh, yeah, Mark did, yeah, he went through all of them.
I'm not familiar with any of the companies, I mean, I.
I mean, I know top-notch, they're good, the other one's a logger, the high estimate is a guy called Affordable Property Services, so I think it's a guy with a chainsaw and a truck.
I've seen, yeah.
Sounds like a guy that takes care of, like, yards. The guy's a logging company, forty-five hundred bucks.
Yeah, I mean, there may be other value in that for him.
Insurance, yeah.
Yeah, you're right, they all, yeah, they have a certificate of insurance, all that. So I'd accept a motion to accept the, uh, the job bid for the tree removal service from Clock Logging and Tree Service.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks Vance, a second?
I'll second it.
A second, thanks Brian, any further discussion?
Um, I would just, you know, contingent upon the exceptions is that we get their certificate.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 no one, yeah, no one, if somebody, no one's gonna step foot on the property and do any work without ensuring that we have their insurance.
Well, just, you know, 'cause it's, it's like, we'll provide, I'm like.
Yeah, yeah.
No, we always.
Do they provide it when they, when they contract it there?
That's all.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay? Abstentions, and that motion carries. All right, so we had done the student, and I don't see a student, so Carol, welcome back, let's hear about it.
It was absolutely amazing, and we'll pass pictures around, um, as you know, Andrew Wilson, a former eighth grader, incoming freshman, won a national contest, and it was on, he created an amazing online map, and he and his mother and I got to go to San Diego for free. And Andrew, the only contingency was that Andrew had to present at a conference, you would have thought that he was an adult, he impressed everybody. He, we were in the, for one presentation he had to do, we're in this enormous room, and they had maps posted everywhere, and people came by to see us. You'll see Andrew talking to a gentleman in the top picture, he was a representative from the company that sent us there. He was so impressed that that night he promised to send Andrew two books that would help him with his work, and since then, we've had multiple emails from him offering free software to Andrew.
Oh, wow.
Again, so he could do things. For the second presentation, he spoke to about forty teachers and other people who want to mentor students. I tell you, he's, if he, when he does public speaking in English, he's going to ace it.
And he was charming, he was personable, he spoke freely, he even had the audience laughing multiple times, he did a phenomenal job.
Uh, he was our state rep to this, and I'd say he represented Lindwood and New Hampshire very, very well, so, it was great.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you, it was, uh, it was an amazing thing.
But San Diego's beautiful.
It was, yes, we did do sightseeing.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I didn't go surfing, they went surfing, but, uh, I did other things that time, but it was, it was, oh, it was a beautiful city, I've never been before. I also have reports from Boys of Summer and Girls of Summer, so, uh, the Boys of Summer is going very well, they have ten high school students participating, they've gone to Franconia Falls, Musilac, Hedgehog, and are planning to go to Georgiana Falls, Franconia Ridge, and they're going to camp at Lafayette Place. This Thursday after the hike, they're also going to Fisher Getz, Cats Game in Manchester. For the Girls of Summer, they've also had an awesome summer, and they'd like to thank you for supporting this enrichment program for the girls. They're gonna take on Mount Washington next week, where they're two-night overnight. One of their ongoing projects has been interviewing and writing about avid hikers, or women who have had an empowering force in their lives. Another memorable experience they had was the combined Boys of Summer, Girls of Summer hike up on Mount Musilac on the hottest day of the summer. I can't believe they did it, uh, the top of Musilac was cool and misty while the rest of the world wallowed in the summer heat. The girls' feedback was that it was fun just once a summer, and they were impressed that the boys could keep up with them. So, the adults felt that because of the mixed genders, no one really complained about being hot or tired, which was a miracle, I would feel like that.
Yeah, I bet.
All's going well.
Just a little, little competition.
Sure.
And thank you.
Thanks, Carol. I did skip over new businesses, does anybody have any new business that they wanted to bring forward?
I just got one short, huh, I know, yeah, it killed me.
I'm not gonna kill you.
No, go, I don't know when our next facilities meeting is, I just wanted to see if you could have Mark, just, I've had a lot of people ask about the, how we had like a plan to keep, we went back to before me, where they talked about, we talked about around budget time, maintaining the fields and stuff. And there's definitely, there's been some like, talk, and it just kinda, if he has like a timeline, or, or do we have, you know, something that we can just report back?
Are you talking specifically the athletic, the athletic fields?
Yeah, 'cause it was supposed to be like, I guess, years ago, when they were done, or something, rotate one a year or something, and then it was brought up again, I think, around budget time, about resurfacing a couple, and I just wanna see if, just kinda, do we have the ball still in, in motion, or, or what have you, that's all.
Yeah, I don't know, did we ever appropriate any funds for that, though? Did that come up at, at budget time or afterwards?
Well, it came up way before, um.
Something in the infield, 'cause we were talking about the jacklits and all that stuff.
No, it didn't.
It, it did, I remember Paula McKay was at a meeting.
No. It came up in the winter, yeah.
In the deep winter or before?
I, I don't remember the date, because it, but it all correlated with some other things that were going on.
It was disgusting.
Yeah, but it was not allocated within this budget, that was just current.
That we were gonna talk about it this year in, in appropriate funds next year, that, so that we could resurface first the front softball field, and also change the, uh, the entrances to the dugouts.
I think it came up right before budget, but it was, it was late to get anything in.
Yeah, you got it.
Right, so, that's the way I remember, but as, as part of our course of action this year as a board, that we were gonna look into it, um, have Mark get some bids at some point, so that next summer, we can have, start with the front fields, the softball field, have that resurf- you know, go down, bring in new top layers, fix the dugouts that are opening.
That's what I was gonna say, since that all came up, I, I've had, you know, softball seasons coming on, a number of people, 'cause I tend to a lot of softball games, 'cause of my kids, I've said, you know, geez, there's, I think both dugouts, but one in particular is, they both have the openings facing, right by the home plate.
Yeah, they, they should be on the other end, yeah.
Instead of the dugout end, um, but the, maybe the visitors' one, there is a day, a warm-up place, and you have the crowd that's on the play,
Right, you're right.
'Cause you have to come onto the field, which, that dugout's fifteen feet from home plate anyway, so then, you know, someone.
And if you're on the other side, you're on the street, right, from there.
Yeah, I mean, that's difficult, and that's not, that's not a unique situation to our field, I mean, there's a lot of fields that kids play on where it's.
But if we have new dugouts, we'll open them to the other side.
Maybe that's something, I don't know what the list is right now.
Could be things that, that's right, if you could put it. Could be things that, that's right, if you could put together a list, I mean, but right now, I mean, even if we had to, we have six thousand dollars in like outdoor maintenance money that if we had to make, do something, maybe we could do something.
Yeah.
You know, not that we have it, have it, but I mean, it was ten thousand allocated for cutting down trees.
I would say that, also just looking at the, the fields themselves, as far as like, you know, the reese, the reese seed, you know, always kind of good things.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
You know, wouldn't probably cost quite as much as like that if you gained actually surfacing infield.
No, yeah, but I mean, just anything, that's all, I'm just, see, you know, do you have a little plan going or what have you, so that, that, it just kinda helps out with the discussions in town.
Yeah, no, it's a good.
So I think we also need, we also need to hit that, get new dugouts, because if you compare the boys field and the boys field dugout is, they're superior in quality.
Catalent.
Yeah, yeah.
Compared to the girls, and a couple of years ago, when we did the lock arms, if I remember correctly, it was really like the boys need to be redone, and someone mentioned we can't do the boys and not the girls, and so we did both. So, and I know we haven't recently done new dugouts, so that's not an issue, but we do have, so a much lower rate of, uh.
We have the funds available, if that's something that we wanna do, then maybe we could just have some scope of work put together and some bids go out to, at least first, so for next season, softball season, there's new dugouts, there's appropriate spacing. And maybe they come out far enough where they can protect an on-deck circle for the other side.
Would you do it this summer?
Well, I don't know if you'd do it this summer, but at least the spring or the fall in between, you know, I mean, it's just, it's just knocking down and concrete and that sort of stuff, but there might be somebody. When's next, is this, be the second one on the list?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, second, we need the second.
Like in school, I think. But no, that's all, that's why I was just throwing out ahead of time, you know, like, like kinda what do we need, it's been, I don't think we've had one yet since, just somewhere around like.
Last meeting.
They had it last.
No, no, facilities.
Facilities was last meeting.
Oh, we did?
The Chair Johnson Controls.
Oh, that's right, we had Johnson Controls, so it kinda drove.
But I think, I think, I agree, Brian, I think it's a great competition for us to have the next, next meeting.
I mean, the dugouts could be done before the season starts, and then we could allocate funds in this budget as far as, you know, digging up the field and resurfacing and then, then maybe the next summer, it's the, it's the diamond or the soccer field up there, or whatever it is, whatever they need.
Put a plan together.
Yeah, put a plan together, just, you know, it's a, it's a source of pride and you want people to have nice facilities to come to and play, I think it's a plan on there.
Also the aesthetics, because that's the first thing that people see.
Right, yeah. Right, yeah.
On our campus.
Right, yeah.
If you wanna meet facilities next week, I don't know if I'll be.
I can, I mean.
Can't.
No, I can, I don't have a problem, cause you're not gonna be here the one after.
Right, um, I'm, I mean, depending on where they're, I'm kinda free for the most part next week.
Is there a big agenda for policy?
There's no meeting next week, right? You're talking about next year?
You can do a meeting next week.
The board meeting.
Yeah, like, if you wanna have one next week sometime.
Oh, cause you're not gonna be here for the next board meeting.
I won't, we can still do it that way, but I just wanna be around.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's up to you guys, you can do it during the day.
I mean, I'm pretty flexible during the, I'm flexible, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I can, I mean, I, I can do it.
What days, what days are you free, Brian?
And even if I can't do it, you guys.
Tuesdays and Wednesdays, totally free.
Are you, sometime like, are you free one of those mornings, Matt, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Sure.
Prefer.
I don't know, but if I'm not, you guys can still meet, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
Judy, which days are you, how are you doing conferences and?
Uh, no, we're all set, Tuesday and Wednesday is okay next week.
Tuesday you have the meeting at Durham.
So Wednesday?
Well, it's at nine, so you'd have to go down.
We could do Wednesday at nine.
Wednesday at nine?
I mean.
Okay. And then maybe afterwards, we can walk around the field and take a, and take a look at.
Now you're making the meeting longer.
Yeah, I know, I'm throwing a picker.
But we could, yeah, take a look and stuff.
Yeah, and that way we can see it, you know, and see what some of the needs are.
Okay.
All right.
Just meet at the S A U then?
Yeah.
Meet, wanna meet the school then, we can.
Uh, yeah, might, meet, meet at the high school, yeah.
Meet, wanna meet the school.
Yeah, 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 meet at the school.
And that way we can walk, walk the fields, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep.
Give it a go.
Yeah, because there's, actually, yeah, let's do that. So some things for fall that I think are easy fixes that, that should probably happen, we can talk about that then.
Awesome.
Um, all right, anybody have anything else? Well, I would accept a meeting to adjourn.